Good evening, and at this time I'd like to call tonight's meeting of the Mills River Planning Board to order. If you'll please join me as we stand for our pledge allegiance. A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. You've all had a chance to take a look at the agenda. Are there any adjustments or additions for this evening? Looks like enough. Okay, you also received an electronic copy of the minutes from May the 20th. If there are any corrections, need to bring that up now, otherwise I will entertain a motion to approve those.
Make a motion we approve.
Have a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Minutes stand approved. Do we have any electronic public comments tonight, Daniel?
I didn't do them.
No? No, and I didn't see anything over there either. Okay. Can I rightly presume, sir, that you're here regarding the text amendment?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, we'll save you till then.
Okay.
Okay, according to our agenda, there is no old business for tonight, so we will move directly into the new business, which is the text amendment, TXT dash twenty-one dash oh one. And so you all received some background regarding that electronically. My understanding is tonight, we are not, we're not receiving any sort of text as an official text amendment. This is simply a discussion to explore that a little bit further and see if that's something that we want to recommend that Daniel move forward with. So I will let, Daniel, I'll let you take it from there.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everyone, and happy Tuesday. We do have with us Scott McElrath here this evening to help explain this text amendment a little bit further. We did not include any proposed text in the packet for this evening. Been researching this a little bit, but this was a consideration thing that the town looked at back in 2017 and 18, which was the creation of the Penny Home Villages, RV parks, park model RVs. And so before we put together text for you to consider, I wondered if Mr. McElrath, they have an opportunity to explain the purpose of this, but also just get some general feedback from you all. Since this conversation was fairly recent, we didn't want to duplicate efforts, and we lost some general feedback from you guys. So that's all I have as far as the presentation. I did include the standards for mobile home, excuse me, penny home parks, park models, and RV parks in your report. And there is a typo that I'm sure most of you caught on the last paragraph under discussion, the last sentence, proposed change, that same point acres will allow for forty-eight units. Is actually supposed to say to say five acres will allow for forty-eight minutes. That was just a mistake of mine.
Okay, so what I'd like to do now is just open the floor to those of you who've had a chance just to kind of look at some of the background and let's just start with some open ended discussion, you know, what your first thoughts were. If we have anything that Mr. McElrath perhaps could address, as we do that, we'll ask him to come up and answer those questions. So I'll just open the floor for that.
I'd like to, could he just come up and, I don't know, I want to be talking about to begin with, and then we can go from there. He'd have to, is there any way we can patch Ken LaPointe?
Yeah, he hasn't, he hasn't tried to walk in yet, you know, just trying to call in.
Well, he's sitting there with his wife. I mean, this is the principal here, though. He was unable to be here this evening, but I just spoke with him. And I had sent him the Zoom link. Okay, are you, have you followed the prompts? Yeah, yeah, you need to enter that meeting ID and password. Okay. I'll tell you what, I'm gonna put you on speaker, and I've got Daniel Cobb and the council here, so, their planning group.
He heard says email.
Thank you for your patience.
We've probably all been in that position at one time or the other.
Is the password right there?
Yeah.
Sorry about that, Scott.
It's okay. You've already missed the pledge allegiance.
Okay. We'll do it again.
He's showing up. I'm sorry.
You don't have my email? Is it set?
There's, there's. You want to send this guy to put in, using ID?
There you go.
Okay, thanks, I'll take a look at that. I can see myself, which is. Did you see me?
I cannot.
See?
He hasn't shown up, so I just keep asking again.
Okay, you got it.
Join without, be a joint with video, okay. There's one more thing that I think we could click on. Join with video, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. There's one, meeting post up here, soon.
I don't know how you can see that.
Yeah, that's, that's what I see now, Scott.
We're, we're allowing you in, yeah.
Okay, here we go.
You see us?
Okay, I guess it's.
Sorry, I'm talking about someone.
Okay, feedback.
Ken, you're muted. You need to unmute your computer, your speaker.
Be bothered by that. Again, can you say name? Okay, you need to unmute. Remember we discussed that? Just unmute, so that.
Bottom left of the screen.
Bottom, bottom left of your screen.
Okay, okay. There we go, there you are.
We can see you. Yes, can you hear us?
I can, I can hear you.
Can you hear me clearly?
I can hear you pretty clearly, yes.
Okay. You may have a volume adjustment there.
Okay, I can hear you, can you hear me?
We can hear you very clearly.
Okay, I can hear you.
Okay, so what we've done is we've called the meeting to order, and we are at the top of the agenda. And we pledged allegiance to the flag, and they've discussed old business. And so now what we're gonna do is explain kind of the concept of the reason, the request for the text amendment.
Right, okay.
You want to handle that, or you want me to handle it?
You can go ahead.
Okay. This is Ken LaPointe.
How do you do? Nice to meet you.
There.
Yeah.
And Ken has been developing in Barrow Beach in Jacksonville, Florida for about thirty years, forty probably.
Forty-two.
For this area. One of the projects, or a project that he's contemplating in this area beyond single-family housing that he's so familiar with is a luxury motor coach resort, which is, you know, your, your rules refer to it as an RV park, this is far from that. I don't know if any of you are familiar with Mountain Falls, up near Lake Toxaway? Nope. But a Class A luxury motor coach is defined as a hundred and two inch wide, forty-five foot long bus, if you will. And, you know, luxury motor coach resorts have taken off quite a bit in the last fifteen years, but it was accelerated when the pandemic hit, and so they've become very popular. Ken's been to Mills River a dozen or more times, and he loves the area. He's an avid trout fisherman, he's had a home in Steamboat Springs, Colorado for a number of years, and we're looking at possibly doing a project of that kind in this area. So we met with Daniel, and it appears as though the most likely zoning that would be favorable to this would be the mixed use. And so when we sat down with Daniel and went over the the outline, y'all contemplate what they refer to as an RV park, but there's no lot dimensions. There's no more specific language to govern the size of a lot. And so the fallback position would, we would have to use the thirty thousand square foot single-family home language until we amended the text. And so that's why we're here, and I wanted, you know, Ken desperately wanted to be here, but he was unable to be here. He's at his home in Jacksonville. So Ken, if you'd like to add something to what I have outlined, that would be, Daniel had not, has not drafted specific text language. This was more of an introductory meeting, and so once we discuss with the planning board our intentions, Daniel will then draft that language.
Yeah, I apologize for not being there. I was, I was on the way to our first meeting, which got postponed, and, and so I'm sorry I couldn't make this meeting. Real quickly, again, Scott has told you, my, my background is basically forty-two years plus of real estate development, predominantly single-family detached housing, and condominium, luxury condominiums, which I've done in Vera Beach, Ponte Vedra Beach, oceanfront projects. Very, very minor amount of commercial, commercial really isn't my thing, residential is what I have always done. And, and I've developed all kinds of neighborhoods, and, and very, very high-end, and, and, and then also moderately priced neighborhoods as well. And so, and I've been in the markets of Jacksonville, and Fernandina, Ponte Vedra Beach, Vera Beach, Gainesville, Florida. Those were my predominant markets that I worked in. I found Scott through a friend of mine because I was up here there looking for a lot to build a home, which I've found. And actually, I got my building permit today, and so we're building a home there. We're gonna be, it's gonna become our primary residence, and really, really looking forward to it. We love the community. I think, I think it's a perfect match for what I like to do, and very outdoors. And I'm not the retiring type, and so I'm always looking for a new project. And, and I've looked at a number of different kinds of projects in the Asheville market, and, and this one is one that I've really started to focus on the most. And the concept is, it's very, very, very different than an RV park, just in a totally different class than an RV park. We're, we're gonna be restricting the, the motor homes to Class A motor, motor coaches only. And you'll see on our site plan, which is not a site-specific site plan, that's one that my land planner did, which would, which would be used, we're using as an example of what we do, but a very, very high-end amenity package, which of course includes all of the standard type things like clubhouse, large family swimming pool, restaurant, and in addition to that, pavilions, parks, pickleball courts, we have six pickleball courts. That seems to be the most popular sport these days, bocce. And, and, and so it's, it's, it's a long list of amenities that we're going to be developing within this project. Our lot sizes, I've, I've been in Mountain Falls two or three different times now. It's a very, very nice community, very well done. It's also a Class A motor coach community. The similarities would be would be our amenity, amenity centers, but ours it goes, you know, a couple of steps beyond what they've done. We are going to increase our lot sizes over what I've seen in the different marketplaces that I've looked at. For this type of product, our lot sizes are a minimum of forty-five feet wide by ninety feet in length or depth. Mountain Falls is thirty-two feet wide and about the same depth, and so we're gonna make it much more like a single-family subdivision in terms of the lot sizes. And for this type of, of a product, product. And the lot sizes allow for the owners to build small guest houses, or casitas they're called, outdoor pavilions, summer kitchens, fire pits, outdoor fireplaces. And I just use the word owner because we sell these lots to, to the, to the buyers. They're not, we're not a rental property, I mean, will there be a rental program? But, but these lots will all be sold to buyers, and owners, who have become, who have become a member of the association that will form. All of the, we'll have a architectural review committee that will strictly enforce the architectural guidelines for any structures that are built on the individual lots. Very similar to what they've done in Mountain Falls. So it'll be a very high-end community. These are the kind of people that actually contribute to communities. I mean, in some cases, they're, you know, philanthropic type people. They don't, they don't, they don't stress communities with their infrastructure demands. These people just, they don't have children, you know, attending schools, local schools, so they don't stress the school system. You know, they don't stress really much of anything else. Hospitals are important to them. And you have a great medical facility there, more than one. And so, you know, they're, they're, they're really great for the community because they spend a lot of money within the community. And they really are contributors in that, in that regard. So, you know, I, if you have any questions for me, if you need anything else about my background, Scott has a list of the projects that I've done over the years, and, but I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, so let's, let's discuss the questions that you have, any thoughts, comments in general? Now, I'd be, Jim, did you want to, I know you had some questions or some comments.
Well, I don't have a whole lot of information at this point, I mean, you just gave us some. But let me say, I am well familiar with this type of operation. I have traveled in a Class A motor coach, not not, not a forty-two footer, but close to it. And we've traveled in every state except Hawaii and Alaska over the years. So I'm somewhat familiar with what he's talking about, but I do have a lot of questions. The property, I'm sure it couldn't be answered tonight, but we see more specific plans of like, where is this proposal? And you may not even have it at this point, but I, I just, you know, of course, we're not expected to make a decision, and I understand anyway, so I would have a lot of questions that could not be answered tonight, but I'm familiar with the concept, obviously, that.
If I could just clarify a little bit, really what the question is, is, is the board comfortable with lots, smaller lots? And this, the use is already allowed. I know that there's, I know that the RV park isn't exactly what, how these folks refer to it, but in essence, the use is allowed. What the, what the distinct difference between what, what's an ordinance versus what is being discussed this evening is ownership of individual lots, which requires a smaller lot size. That's, that's really the issue, any, any concerns associated with that? There's not a proposal to change it, density or anything like that, it's probably just the box size. And I don't know that they have a particular property in mind, but that's kind of beside the point. It's really about the subdivision of land to a smaller lot size that, I think, warrants a discussion.
Well, Daniel, let me say one thing, you mentioned density, that's been a key component of everything we've discussed the last nine years or so I've been on the board. And you gentlemen mentioned something about, like I said, I'm well familiar with what a forty-five foot local motor coach would be. But you mentioned something about, oh, they could build a guest house. Then we increased the density even more. That's all I got to say on that right now.
So I'm questioning the other part about this, and why doesn't a special use permit cover what we're talking about here?
If the special use permit would cover, it would be allowed under a special use permit, but the difference is under the current structure of the code, land has to be in single ownership, and the space will be rented to, to visitors. The difference with this being that they would actually subdivide land and sell that land separately.
So to that end, then special use doesn't cover the actual sale of property divided small?
That's correct.
And to do this, then we have to apply this to all MRMU? I mean, we couldn't just do it whatever they do.
No, 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 the text amendment to a base district, there's very, throughout county where that exists.
Okay, so I need clarification, and I think I've heard my clarification, but I just want to make sure. So what we're proposing is changing the, everything that is known MRMU to reduce the minimum lots size from thirty thousand per feet to forty-five hundred square feet, am I right? So throughout Mills River, and I don't know if you've seen this map, but the blue is MRMU. So we're proposing changing that lot size requirement, reducing the lot size requirement on, I guess, three quarters of the river?
Well, it's my understanding we're defining lot size according to an RD. Based on the language that exists. It, not, you Daniel can speak, I'm not faulted.
The, first of all, I'm considering anything at the moment, but just kind of getting some feedback from you all, Mr. The Point, Scott McElrath here. But yes, the text amendment to a mixed-use district, never the commercial or residential, whatever the case may be, applies nationwide regardless of the project. Now, there is another layer to this because RV parks, penny moon parks, park model parks, all require a special use permit now. So there could be, thinking, there could be a process in which smaller lot sizes are allowed for specific uses by you, motor coach, motor coach parks. And so that means the only way you'd be able to subdivide land to that small lot. And Scott, the forty-five hundred came from a rough multiplication of one hundred by forty, I think. Forty-five to a hundred, the lot size, but that was just, it could be less, I just made a number. So you could, in theory, have a process that allows for the subdivision of land or forty-five hundred square foot lots associated with the motor coach park, RV park specifically. Especially use permit would be approved by the town council.
Can you speak to the concept of sanitation for that kind of setup?
I'm gonna defer to Mr. The Point on that one. Ken, you had discussed, we met in person, about how you would handle the water and wastewater. Can you talk about that a little bit, please?
Yes, this project would require us constructing an onsite sanitary sewer system and an onsite water system. And compared to years ago, the, the systems today are so much more sophisticated. They're very expensive, but they're so much more sophisticated and, and that I have no reservations as far as building an onsite sanitary sewer system and water system. The extension from existing is about a mile and a third, and, and so I think that this is probably the best way to go. And, and, and I haven't priced the extension, but it isn't a simple extension, you know. It is in Florida, let me put it that way. It's very, it's a very different route than, you know, we would have in Florida. So yes, I would propose to, to construct onsite sanitary sewer and onsite potable water.
I have a couple of questions, just wanted to clarify a few things. In the, the information you sent us, it said that a five acre tract under the current guidelines could be divided into twenty lots, but with density regulations, it was only seven.
Right.
So, okay, so a five acre lot, as it is now, can only have seven units of, that's the maximum four units per acre. Okay, yes, okay. So what we're talking about changing
So what we're talking about changing, you said it would be allowed for 48. Right, does that allow for 48 within the density requirements? Or is that?
Yes, if you had 4,500 square foot lots, and you had five acres to work with, you could put 48 units on it.
Okay.
Four units per acre.
Okay, and do we know what size y'all are contemplating as far as how many units you're going to do?
It's about 350.
Yeah, I have, we have a master plan that I shared with Dan. And then like Ken was saying, it's not size-specific. It was just a conceptual, created, managed workover number of years.
So you're, you're talking about wanting to do 350 lots?
Correct.
I, I am familiar with, with this concept in that I actually recommended it to an employer not too many years ago, that they explored building such a complex, and they didn't follow my suggestion. And I think they missed the boat in this area, because I think this is something that would work in this area. And I've seen other, I've not seen the one that you just talked about. I didn't realize it was there up in the valley, but I've seen some other ones around the country. And ones that are done right are very impressive, and I don't have a problem with, with this, this concept. And I don't know that I have a problem with us changing the, the text to allow for something like this to be built here. My concern is, in changing the text, what else should we allow? And that's, and, and I know that's unfortunate for y'all to be stuck behind that particular rock. But it is something that does concern me, that if we change this text, what other things down the road might creep in on us that are not projects like yours that I would want to see? And that's, that's where my concern is. So I guess I got to wrap my mind around when we dot our i's and cross our t's, like he was saying, we're protecting town from elements other than you.
Which is exactly what I want to do, too. I live here. But Daniel, unless I misunderstood you, is this would pertain to RV-type projects? Not, not a generic mixed-use zone? Did I misunderstand?
No, that's, that's, that would be the intent, is that right now, tiny home parks, park model RV parks, recreational vehicle parks, the last one is what was classified as as are allowed to face special use permit issued by the town council. So it would likely have to be some combination of three-in-one-year type of subdivision that's allowed with a special use permit in conjunction with a recreation vehicle park. Have to come up with a better way to phrase that, but that would, that would be the idea, meaning you couldn't just subdivide land and put it on a square feet. It has to be with park model or recreational vehicle park project specifically.
So that would alleviate Mr. Perry's concern?
My concern was that in making this text adjustment, if that's the route we choose to go, that it opens the door for less-desired projects to sneak in on us.
Well, it would allow for recreational vehicle parks to occur anywhere that they're allowed. And those are the mixed-use, which is what I'm right now. And it would mean that, the way that I just phrased the bill, you could only subdivide land with that small property as part of an RV park, not just go public, find 10 acres, create 40 units per feet blocks or something like that.
Okay.
Yeah, that's, that was the point I was trying to make, too, and clearly I didn't make it there well. But I don't, I don't, I could not agree to this applying to MRMU. If it's narrowed somehow, so that it is a, your project or a project similar to yours, whatever, then that would be a whole different thing than what I read here, that we are changing all of MRMU to 4,500 square feet blocks.
Yes, ma'am, I understand. And, and I'll hand out this conceptual drawing that we have. The property is buffered such that it's unlikely that you can see it. So.
So which property are you talking about?
We're considering several, and we, 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 it's, it's a big project. And, you know, you have to have something that's extremely hard to find here in, in our area, which is, you know, about 100 acres with good topo. And, and proper zoning. And it's been challenging. So we, we do not, we have not identified a property. We've looked at several. So we're trying to do it right, and this seemed to be the logical first step after we met with Dan.
I will say as a positive note, that the one thing that I can believe and have seen in these similar circumstances traveling and know the amount of travel that I've done in 20-plus years now, is that this kind of development does encourage the restaurants that we are looking for. It does encourage, it does create the density issues that we're talking about, too. But it would encourage some of the developments that we have in the past considered positive, if we're looking for prospects in this.
I guess another concern I have is that, you know, we've wrestled with affordable housing in the past as well. Having, opening ourselves up to a development with this size lots, why couldn't somebody come in and make the same argument, and why shouldn't they? That let's put something more affordable, that $300,000 luxury motor coach on these tiny little lots. You know, this, this is, this is real from the time I've been on the planning board, that there's a lot of folks who would like to see affordable housing in Mills River. And, you know, with that small a lot size, you could make, I think, pretty affordable.
Well, there are some natural hurdles that one has to overcome for that density. It has to be financially justified. And, you know, these folks that are driving $500,000, $700,000 luxury motor coaches.
My, my numbers are behind the times, so.
Yeah, so they have the means to pay for the lot, which justify the expenditure of, of, let's say, a million six for a sanitary sewer system. You know, another good thing about that, having site specificity, is you wouldn't have a, you wouldn't have a two-mile stretch or a two-mile corridor where you're putting in water and sewer for additional development. It would be site-specific. And, and, you know, the days of getting the discharge permit are, are over. And this would be handled in a very sanitary way, not putting the fluid in a string. So that's, I know that's forward-thinking, but, you know, if somebody wanted to go over here and put 70 affordable housing units, they're going to have to put it very near existing water and sewer, for its cost prohibitive.
Yes, Scott, my understanding, the, the, our sanitary sewer and water system are only going to be constructed for our project. Or for our project, nothing with no intention of those utilities ever going off-site, extending, no extensions, in other words. Yeah. And, and, and this group of people, you, you made mention of restaurants, that they would be tremendous supporters of that kind of commerce in your, in your area, in the, in the entire area, really. They, they dine out a lot. That's, that's kind of what they do. Seven, 70% of the Class A motor coaches have a vehicle behind them. And it's probably, that's probably increased recently. And so they, 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 you know, really get out and about.
And just like you were speaking a minute ago, Mr. Perry, this, this is the gas, is the webinar that we work here. This is a top market in the country for all the reasons we live here.
So I actually have a couple of questions. First of all, though you're willing to change the language to a certain amount of square footage for residential lots, these would be residents, is that correct? These would be temporary residents, they wouldn't even be residents of Mills River, is that correct?
That's correct. They would own that space. They would own that space, and so.
So would they be part-time residents, residents? How is that going to contribute to tax base?
Well, that property would be taxed, if, 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 right. As far as I would imagine, like other real estate, what they pay.
But they could, they wouldn't necessarily live there all the time. They could drive it in and out whenever they chose.
My expectation would be that the great eight months that we have here in January, that the site will be occupied either by those folks or folks that we would rent it to because their property would be in a rental program.
So, so that's, that was another question as well. So once they buy it, they can participate in a rental program, rent it to themselves, or let a friend use it, or whatever.
No, it'd be handled, very similarly to the way it's handled at Hilton Head. You can own a property at Hilton Head, but you put it in a rental program so the local realtor would rent your property and charge a fee for doing that and managing that property. That's what we envision. I would also envision that about eight months out of the year, we would, we would have somewhere between 75 and 100% occupancy eventually. But I, I wouldn't anticipate that there would be too many folks interested in being here in January.
We are. So this is really not, not based on the number you've given. This is not going to be the current residential Mill River or Hilton Head.
We'd certainly love to have them, but.
Well, I'm thinking you're going to look at a different demographic.
Yeah, I would think that if I lived here, I would want to buy one of those. That would be my guess, but certainly they could.
When I look at, in, in our Code of Ordnance, and you guys may have brought your books as well, but one of the things that is probably my, one of my biggest hang-ups, in addition to make sure that the language was, was correct, because my concern is the same as you guys, that if, if, if we're making just a general change in millimeter mix use, and there could be a lot of size of, you know, if it's the 45 by 90, that's 4,050 square feet in Mill River mix use. That is not suitable to Mill River. But even this that you proposed, it sounds wonderful, and it looks wonderful. And if I had a Class A motor home, it might be somewhere I would like to visit. But the introduction to Mill River Mix Use, it said, "In keeping with the intent to enhance and protect the rural character of Mills River, residential lot sizes shall be no less than 30,000 square feet per single-family dwelling." And we've talked about that over and over. A comprehensive plan that we just adopted reiterates preserving and protecting the rural character. I sat on this board and we had the discussion, and you did, Jim, and you did share as well, with the tiny homes and the RV parks. And we landed at a place that, that allowed for more, that, that was four units per acre, which was still just under 11,000 square feet per tiny home or unit. And that was to protect the character of Mills River. So I would just, I would just say this is not something that I can throw myself behind. I personally don't think that it is a great fit for Mills River. And I know you guys have different opinions, and that's why we're here, because we all have different opinions, and that's why we have discussions. So that's fine.
How transient would the coaches themselves be at this point? Do, I mean, are they leaving the coaches stationary at any point? Other than when they're just living here? Then would they leave them here all year, some of them?
No, it's not a storage facility. If they're here, they're units here. If they're not here, they're units not here.
On this conceptual thing, I just have a quite realized as a conceptual thing. It looked like you would have a restriction center and management onsite all the time. Is that correct, Kim?
I'm sorry, I couldn't hear that.
Have a management center and employees manage that center at all times.
Yeah, yeah, the association will be managed 12 months, you know, 52 weeks a year, absolutely. Oh, yeah, it has to be managed. And, and management is really, really important to me. I, I've established a number of homeowners associations over the years, and management is key. I mean, a, a really, a really good example of management would be the management company at the Ramble. And, and, and they, they manage their project the way I would want to manage this project. It's, it's incredible the way it's managed, it really is. And because we, we're going to have activities, we're, we're, there'll be some residents that are there all year long. But we're going to have activities and, and, and that kind of organization with an amenity package like we have is critical that it's managed properly and maintained properly.
Well, I have to agree with Cheryl at this point. I realize we're a long ways from the final point. But this is what I wanted to say. This, this really, to me at this point, is not a good match for what we've sworn to, when we were sworn in as members, to try to maintain a rural atmosphere and promote growth. That's my thinking right now.
I, I mean, I understand where, but then we're coming from, and I do have concerns about what this changes and how it changes, but I'd like to see some language. Because if we can, if we can create some language that protects the town, but allows a project like this to come in, I think it's worth taking a look at. Because, while I understand, you know, we're supposed to be stewards of Mills River and whatnot, but we're also supposed to be managing growth, and growth happens regardless. And firstly, I think something like this is the kind of growth that it should be nurturing. So I'd like to see some, I'd like to see some language on how we frame it to allow a project like this to happen, but protect against just random things that we don't want to see come into our hair. Or anybody else feels a lot like season language.
So do you guys have any more questions or any more discussion before we give some direction to town staff? Okay, so I think at this point, what I just need to know, what Daniel would like to know is, I guess I just need to, the thesis we have and think of, just to go down the line and say, if you would like to see some language drafted to consider, say yes. And if not, if you're opposed to even moving forward, say no, and that way we'll give some direction. What do you think? Okay, so that's what we'll do. If you would like to see language for, say yes.
No.
Jim?
No.
Sharon, would be, no, Cheryl?
Yeah, I'm, I'm open to language, but I'm the only one that's talking up.
Ryan?
I'm, I'm yes for language. I'd like to. I'm, yes, for language, I'd like to see some language before we just write this off.
Okay, so Daniel, there were four that were opposed to moving forward, and one of those is yes.
Three, two, three.
Pardon me, so there's three who are opposed to, would like to see some language.
Okay. Well, so would you, so how do you want to handle that? I mean, there's these gentlemen have, have paid the application fee for a text amendment.
So I would, what I would recommend, because it seems to be a no, and they have made the effort to, to pay for the application, I would make a recommendation that we refund that application fee to them for their effort to do, to come to this point. If that's something that we can do, and I would make that a motion.
Oh, we'll circle it then.
On the favor? Any votes? I'm not sure that's how we're supposed to do it, but we just did that.
Yeah, I will, I will look into refunding of the fee.
Yes, I don't want to set a precedent for a future either, but, but I do know this was an investment of time, a lot of investment and effort as well.
Yeah. Yes, thank, I want to thank everybody for considering our proposal. And hopefully we can put some.
And it sounds like perhaps still a point in the future, one day, that that might be something we're ready to hear. But we're just not right now, but thank you for your time this evening.
I'm, I'm sorry, it's a little bit, it's, it's, the vocal is a little bit scratchy that I'm receiving. I couldn't hear you.
I just said thank you for joining us tonight, and, and, you know, perhaps, it sounds like perhaps in the future we might like to revisit it, but we do appreciate you jumping in and joining us tonight.
Okay, thank you very much.
Okay, so do we have additional items tonight on each other?
In looking at your upcoming dates, your next planning board meeting is the day after our Independence Day observance? I don't know if it's, if you want to, usually you either postpone or cancel that meeting that for the July week, are you interested in thinking about that?
Is there anyone on the planning board who cannot make that meeting that you know?
So lie second, is that it?
July sixth.
So.
I can be here, I guess my question would be since staff is off the day before.
We'll be there. There's, there's a couple of other things that are on the schedule for our business, so we've, we've planned to be here for.
Okay, so we'll just leave that as it is there. Thank you, Arlene.
I would just, if I can, Madam Chair, want to introduce Mike Malachek, that is running the ministry. Mike comes to us from the Triangle area, been here for about three weeks. Very pleased to have him, so Mike.
Nice to meet you all, it's good to be here, plenty of work to do, but really does use though. With the board of those, staying more Tuesday nights here.
We would do something social, but that would be a quorum, and we're not allowed, so sorry. All right, so now is the, your period of time in the evening. If someone would like to say to manage.
I think I'm already really adjourned.
Who's now adjourned?
All in favor? I doubt there's anyone opposed, so we are adjourned.